Okay, let's get this meeting started. This is a September 4th, 2024 flying board meeting. Let's start with the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
Pledge of Allegiance, Superlight Act of the United States of America and to the Republic where mission stands, why we nation, under God, individual, liberty and justice for all.
Okay, welcome. I see mostly faces I have seen before, so just a reminder, the exits are back in the corner over here and over here. Follow Ron out if there's any problem. He'll be the first one out, so that's not a big deal. Reminder, please silence all of your electronic devices, phones, watches, all that good stuff. We will be following the rules of procedures adopted by this board on January 3rd of this year. Hopefully, everyone has signed in. I saw most people signing in. Next item up is the approval of the August 21st meeting. Anybody, everybody get a chance to review them? Anybody have any comments? Do I have a motion to approve? Moved by Doug, seconded by Adrian. Any other comments? All in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. Okay, we have approval. Legal notices, there were no new legal notices for tonight. First item up is continued re-subdivision, public hearing for the Fowler Family Trust. I'll go right to Ron and he can give us the update of what's going on.
Yeah, the zoning board of appeals met on the 26th of August, I think it was. And they continued their public hearing to September 23rd and directed staff to prepare two draft resolutions for their consideration.
Okay.
So hopefully on the 23rd, we'll have a decision.
Okay. Dan?
I have nothing more.
Highway?
I'm outside.
Okay, this is a public hearing. Do we have anyone here to speak for or against this application? One more time, both online and here, anyone here to speak for or against this application? Okay, I have a resolution in front, oh, board, has the board got anything? I didn't think so. I have a resolution of adjournment and continuation of this application to October 2nd of 2024. That puts it after the September 23rd GBA meeting, so... Do I have a motion to waive the reading and approve this resolution?
Moved.
Moved by Adrian, seconded by?
Gina.
Regina. Any other comments? Court take a roll call vote, please.
Beats.
Aye.
Gina Sousa.
Aye.
Adrian Bellas.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, approved. See you later. All right. All right, I think the next item up would be all of our iSolar applications. The two that we were planning to work with tonight were the special use permits for East and West. Would you guys like to have any comments on it, or you just want me to turn it to staff? Come on up, in case there are questions, you might as well be in place. And you only went to sleep about 10 times, I understand. Did everybody get a chance to look at the 100 pages of resolution that Ron put together? Great job, Ron, by the way. Needed that a couple nights. I had a hard time going to sleep, so we used it. So you wanted to kind of give us an overview? I mean, I know you submitted whatever documents that the town wanted.
Since the last meeting, you did receive the engineers.
Right. Okay. Okay, that's the plan, and so everyone knows, special use comes next. Once that is complete and signed off on, then we'll get into the actual site plan itself, preliminary and final site plan. Ron?
Yeah, the resolution for the special use permits followed the criteria that's in the town code. Some of it applied, some of it didn't. There were some blanks in the draft resolution, because we were looking for dates for when the decommissioning plan and the operation and maintenance plans
Right.
would be approved by the town engineers. They're still working on those.
Correct.
So that necessitates us having to continue the public hearing on the special use permits. Now, one of the things that does come out is that we are looking for and awaiting site plans for the East and West projects.
Yes.
Emily has been made aware of the need for those. It's good that we have one project shows overall, but we don't want to jeopardize approving, let's say, the East project and not approving the West project and then having a stalemate.
Right.
Because both projects want to prove. So she's working on it, but it's my understanding. And then the other thing is that we need to see the lot line adjustment land map, flat map, between you and Jonathan Orpin in Energy Works to get approvals from both parties.
Yep.
You're in agreement with those land swaps and we'll we've got to have those in place before we can act on the preliminary site plans.
Right. We've seen those, we just need to see the documentation on those.
So you can sign it and file. Yes.
Yeah. Sooner the better. Give staff a chance to look at them separately like that. Anything else, Ron?
No, that's basically it.
Dan?
Yeah, I'm just gonna comment. Again, Ron did a really good job putting together the draft resolution for this special use permit. It is very code-driven, as Ron mentioned, so there's a lot of detail in there. Also, Collins is online for MRB tonight, but we did get an email from Lance just saying that they are working on the decommissioning plan and the operation and maintenance plans, reviewing documents and having communications back and forth with the applicant, so they're not in a spot either to move forward, so recommendation of a continuation is appropriate.
Jim?
No, just wait, we have a site plan.
Okay. So, I'm gonna turn it over for public comments in just a minute. Just a few reminders. Number one, we're dealing with the special use permit tonight.
Collins is online. I don't know if he has.
Oh, I'm sorry, Colin. I forgot. Colin, can you, do you have some comments from our town engineer?
Sure, so as so we did issue a comment letter on August 29th. It covered a variety of items such as site plan, SWIP, operations, maintenance, and decommissioning. That's about all I have to report on that at the moment.
Okay. All right, yeah, the big piece that's been holding us up right now is the decommissioning and operations and maintenance plan that needs to we need to have approval from the town engineer that they believe everything is is good, and then the next phase of that, that would go to the town board for approval, and then and we would go forward with that. We could approve the special use permits with that being with that, after the town engineer agrees that they're complete, we can do that, but we can't do the final site plan until it's complete, signed, sealed, and delivered by the town board. So, I think we're ready to go to public comments, but before we do, I'm not gonna set a timer tonight. I don't see too many people in the audience. I'd like to focus on the special use permit and the documents that we have. But it's a public comment period. You can public comment anything you want on this application. So with that, I will turn on the mics, remember about sidebar conversations, and please direct everything, your questions or comments, to me. Okay, who would like to speak for or against this project? Yes, ma'am, you got your hand up, quick.
Always do. Again, I want to point out
Amen.
Oh, yes. Mr. Wilder, 611 Redfield. And I want to point out again that there's a lack of information regarding health concerns or being so close to the solar farm, being so close to residential. I know that you had told me previously, there's only a tiny little bit of hazardous materials in the solar panels and things like that, however, we all know about in the western states how when building the solar farms, there have been issues with leakage into the groundwater, cattle dying, things like that costing farmers. Farmland's no good anymore, even after the solar farm is good. We had three fires in New York State at solar farms where people were instructed to shelter in place because of toxicity. How do you say that?
You did good.
Okay, and you know, so having a solar farm less than 1.2 miles away from a residential area is not smart, it's not prudent, it's not ethical, and I think it's immoral, to tell you the truth. We all know, we talked last time or the time before about Hooker Chemical and the Love Canal. It's no different to me for solar farms to say, oh, there's no issue, or solar companies to say there's no issue when, you know, the same thing happened with can't think of the name of their company, something Pharma. It made OxyContin, and we just know how that ended up, right? Just, it's not safe, until we have more data from doctors, from the medical industry. It's not safe, and to make a decision to put it closer than 1.2 miles without this information is reckless. It's not fair. I mean, my sister suffers, and the key word here is suffers, from lupus because my mother was given pills when she was pregnant with my sister for morning sickness, and it caused lupus. You know, I mean, Redfield Grove is not a 55-plus community.
Oh, it's not?
There's a lot of older people there, myself included, but we have children, grandchildren come to visit. The homes, there are, there is at least, I think, one family that has little kids there, and it's not right that without the proper data you go forward with this. I think it's unfathomable.
Thank you very much. Anyone else like to speak for or against this application? Yes, sir.
A girl, 10, 60, 27, Redfield. I just have a question. I take it we're not actually addressing specifics on the site tonight?
Correct. We're doing, we're doing the special use permit is what we're really kicking down the road until the engineer is comfortable with the decommissioning plan as well as the operations and maintenance plan.
You're speaking of MRB?
MRB.
MRB. Okay, thank you very much, appreciate it.
And then we'll get in when this happens, when we get this done, then we'll get into the actual site plan. We'll get into the first part of the site, the preliminary.
I just wanted then to remind the planning board that we did send a letter to to the planning board on August 19th regarding some requests that we had regarding the site itself.
Okay.
That will probably save time if we understand that that's been read and being considered. It's been part of the.
Okay, okay, thank you.
I couldn't.
Just double check it here, put in correspondence with the town board. And with our paper record.
Thank you.
Anyone else like to speak for or against this application here in the room? One more time, anyone here to speak for or against this application? Hey, we'll go online. Anyone online that'd like to speak for or against this application? Anyone online like to speak for or against this application? Okay, we will move forward with a resolution to continue, to, sorry, where the journey continued. PB 0406-24, PB 0407-24, the two special use permits for East and West. Do I have a motion to approve that continuation? Moved by Doug, seconded by?
Adrian.
Adrian, any other comments? Court take a roll call vote, please.
Beats. Our Gina Sousa.
Aye.
Adrian Bellas.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, next item up is basically adjournment continuation of the preliminary site plans for East and West. It's the same basic thing we've done. Until we get this done, we don't want to try to take on too many things at once. So we'll have a motion here to, of journey continued, both the East and West, that'd be PB 0408-24, PB 0409. If two resolutions, I have a motion to block and approve those as presented.
So moved.
Moved by Adrian, seconded by?
Gina.
Gina, any other comments? Court take a roll call vote, please.
Beats.
Aye.
Gina Sousa.
Aye.
Adrian Bellas.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, we're continued. We'll work really close with MRB. We'll get that decommissioning and the operations and maintenance to where they're comfortable with it, and then we get moving on, okay? Thank you very much. Okay, that's the end of Solar for tonight. In case you guys wanted to stick around and hear the exciting news on some of our other stuff, otherwise you can certainly leave, it's your choice.
What's the date it's adjourned to?
Pardon?
You know the date it is adjourned to?
18th.
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 Thank you.
Okay, next item up is PB 0803-24, the DeHollander Design Final Site Plan for Lot 4. Okay, do we have someone representing DeHollander Design?
You do.
Ah, there you are. How you doing?
Very good.
Good. Give us a little light update on what's going on, what's changed in the final and?
Mostly editorial, and they were consistently what had been identified in their preliminary conditions, so we received some additional comments. These are mostly editorial. I can base those changes by difficulty. For consideration though, tonight, I would like to request relative to condition 6J and both of those conditions, J deals with the drainage and an overlay showing the drainage path through the property, and M is a tracing overlay showing all areas that are susceptible to flooding. Sort of a wider view than what can fit on sheet one. I'd like to have for consideration to be able to provide a memo to deal with those two items for the.
Okay, well, that's a good segue into moving on to Ron.
So you want us to table this till we get the memo?
No, I'd like to move forward and keep that as conditions. I can certainly show them on, as a totality extends on Lot 1, but to some extent, there is an impact over the adjacent lots that I just wanted adequately explained.
So you want to put a memo on the map about these?
No, I certainly can add the information to the plan.
Okay.
And we're just talking about the pathway of drainage. I can show that on Lot 1 with no difficulty. But if we're talking about an information that extend beyond the limit of Lot 1, because we're very zoomed in dealing with the site plan there, I can't adequately show that, so I felt maybe I would ask for consideration to address it with a memo, but if that's difficulty, certainly don't want to make it a difficulty.
So, those conditions are right out of the code book. I mean, they were purported.
Okay, I got it.
So, but let me try to clear up a little bit. We want it focused on the lot, so this is what Lot 4. That's what it's calling up. It's just what's on that lot. If you want to talk or submit a memo with it saying, hey, on a bigger scale, this is how it's being addressed, all we want to see is what's on that lot. That's the concern, and that's what the code calls out. I know that you're zoomed in, but obviously, yes, on a bigger scale.
I can do that. I just wanted to be really, address the concern completely.
So you're good, you're good with JM as they are, and you know what you need to do?
I do, thank you.
Okay, all right, any else? Ron?
Well, I'm glad you clarified that up, because I wasn't sure what Lot 1 was referring to.
Lot 4.
Answer, I'm just. Any else? Dan?
So the draft resolution did come with a little bit more comments than we normally see on a final, but it's very, as the applicant said, they're all technical.
And administrative kind of thing.
Yeah, so, and then again, a reminder, all those have to be addressed. The chairman and staff need to sign it before we can accept the application for permit, so just as a reminder, that's the procedure.
No work till that's done. Simple. Jim?
I have nothing at this point.
Alan?
MRB doesn't have any comments.
Okay. This is, let me go back here and look. This is a final site plan. Final site plan. It's not a public hearing. Just wanted to double check for that. Okay, board have any comments on this one?
I don't.
I don't either. So, I didn't ask, but you've got a resolution with a whole bunch of conditions. You're obviously familiar with them. You accept those conditions?
Yes.
Okay, so, do I have a motion to approve this resolution, waive the reading, and move forward with this application?
Moved.
Moved by Doug, seconded by? Regina, okay, court take a roll call vote, please.
Beats.
Aye.
Gina Sousa.
Aye.
And Haven.
Aye. Now, it was said earlier, work with staff, get those done. If everything's on the plan, just like it says here, we'll get her signed as soon as we get it in, and we'll get this thing rolling for you, okay?
Appreciate it.
Thank you very much. Okay. Okay. Next item up is PB 0801-24, Beemy Associates Final Site Plan for the 1816 Booker Meeting of Museum Project. Lynn, come on down.
Evening, everybody.
Yeah, tell us what's changed from the preliminary to final.
Not much.
Okay.
With Beemy, Dave is here with me from Baker Mead. He's here before me before.
Yeah.
Last time we were here, we got preliminary. There was just some minor comments from MRB and staff and the board for our final site plan application. I think we've addressed them all. We haven't really heard.
Cool.
I think we've addressed everything as far as I know, and we're just looking to get the final site plan to
All right.
move along.
We've got a resolution here. You have a chance to review the resolution?
I didn't, but I don't know that.
With conditions, there's eight conditions. Why don't you go ahead and go take a listen while I turn it to staff. Here you go.
I think you might want to, Dave, so, sorry.
And take a quick look at that, and we'll turn it to staff. Ron?
No, I we're ready to go. There's no surprises there.
Okay.
This is just for the parking lot, parking lot driveways and who will, we're moving the shell, we're all
Right.
getting state tools to start making the renovations to the structures.
Perfect. Okay, Dan?
Again, conditions are technical in nature. And then the biggest thing, as a reminder, exactly, that set up the last application, is everything has to be signed, delivered, corrected.
Before anything starts.
Before they can submit for building permits, so.
Okay. Jim?
Well, like I said before, I'm not going with Dave.
Perfect.
We're, we just go ahead and submit, and we have no objections.
Perfect, that's what, that is exactly what I like to hear. Okay, board, do the board have any, any issues with the application or with the resolution?
Maybe.
Huh? Oh, I'm sorry. Alan, I keep forgetting you. I'm sorry about that. Alan, does MRB have any comments on this application?
No worries. We issued an email on August 16th indicating that we have no comments.
Perfect, perfect, that's what I like to hear. Okay, so we have an application here with conditions, applicants agree to those. I have a motion to waive the reading and approve this application as presented.
So moved.
Moved by Adrian, seconded by? Regina, any other comments? Court take a roll call vote, please.
Beats.
Aye.
Gina Sousa.
Aye.
Adrian Bellas.
Aye.
And him.
Aye. Okay, thank you guys very much. Now, you heard what he said. You get, you don't get to start a thing until that's turned in, and we get to sign it, and then you move over. Okay, work with staff.
Will do.
Please.
Yep.
Okay, next item up is other board actions. Concept plan discussion on a, we can't figure out whether it's seven or eight lots. Resub, or subdivision of land along the south side of Collet and west side of Cairo 8, north of the Niagara Mohawk Power Corporation. Come on up, tell us what you're trying to do, what you want to do, and a little bit about the products.
Mark Alexander is the name, and I am the builder as well as trying to develop this thing.
Okay.
Larry, my engineer, I thought we'd be here by now. Overall, the concept issue with you?
Again, it's concept, so we don't need to get too far in the weeds, but okay.
We're just looking to subdivide this and put in five on one side, three on the other side. Individual family homes, ranging anywhere.
Fifty-one is the house on the corner. Let me see, it's, we see four, eight, seven. I don't know why there's four, there's a point I got.
I put it on OneDrive. I was having that confusion too. It says eight, but it looks like seven.
Yeah, so the letter that was submitted by Larry says eight, but the map shows seven, so.
Wow.
Okay, well, this map shows five instead of four along Collet. Yes, so I guess it is eight. We just need an updated map from what we got.
That was the original map. We asked for an engineered map, and this is what the engineered map came back.
Okay, well, hopefully for tomorrow's meeting, you'll have the proper map for the guys on bar at the PRC.
All right, so basically, we're just gonna follow whatever guidelines we talked about before, having the houses 50 foot off the road, blacktop driveways, single-family homes. I guess there, there's a question as to whether or not we can find a sewer line?
We, sewer department has said you cannot.
You cannot?
Correct.
Okay.
So then we'll do the perp test and do all that stuff that's needed.
Okay. Yeah, and obviously, so it'll have to be the right size to be able to put.
Oh, yeah, absolutely, absolutely.
And that might be why we're only showing seven now, because the lots might have had to been a little bit bigger.
That could be, I'm not sure.
Yeah.
I didn't catch it.
Okay.
Not saying yes or no, but that makes sense.
Yes. Yeah, why are you cutting down here, so. Okay, I mean, I think we know what you're doing there. You're just building a little subdivision around that.
I have some questions.
Yeah.
Buildings, building lots.
Just the building lots, yeah, and that's true, yeah.
Building seven at this point, maybe eight, I don't know.
Yeah, so, right. Okay, it's a concept, so that's what we're here for. Let's turn it over to staff, and then we'll see what the board has for comment for you. Ron?
Concept, the only thing I'm concerned about is site distance
Right.
for the driveways.
Yeah.
Because of the change in topography there on County Road eight and the fact that well, the signs say forty-five miles per hour and often it's just a suggestion and not followed. So at fifty-five miles an hour, you travel eighty-eight feet per second. It takes you about five, six seconds to react.
Right.
You traveled a good distance. The other thing I would encourage the board to consider is turnarounds for every driveway so that they're not backing down to the highway.
I would be really.
Sorry, what was that?
Turnaround in the, on the property so that they don't have to back onto those roads which are forty-five plus.
We had already, even though it doesn't show, we've already taken that into account for just that reason. Instead of backing into that highway, you can drive straight into it.
Yeah, that's going to help a lot.
Yeah.
Anything else, Ron?
Yeah, the other thing I guess I would show is the driveways to the park and the.
Oh, yeah. Show the driveways across as well as, well, you do have other roads coming in there.
You mean he'll drive across.
Drive, well, it's the park especially.
Yeah.
All right, anything else, Ron, for now?
No.
I know it's going to PRC tomorrow. You'll get, staff will give you an earful of what they got going on.
Yeah, so that's where I was going to go with my comments is this hasn't been discussed at first level.
Correct.
At this point, they have to have requests come in front of the planning board, just because you guys meet before our PRC.
Yeah.
Because of how the dates are.
Yeah.
I don't have a lot of comments from staff at this point.
And.
They're going to dive into it tomorrow. I mean, we do have some concerns. Obviously, this area is wet out there. My concern would.
Well, there is some wetlands down into this area that would be protected and we couldn't do anything with those anyways.
Well, correct, but I'm just, if we go the septic route, I'm worried about perking and items with that. My other concern is you got the gas line, pipeline that goes through there, which is a right away for that. Um.
Yeah, I think that's over here somewhere. You got one over here too.
Yeah, I mean, so there's already a lot of stuff going on. So I mean, from staff point of view, I think we're going to have to take a hard look at all that. Those will probably be comments that will come back to you guys. In the letter that's attached to your paperwork, they would like to submit by the twelfth, which would put it on. They're saying the first meeting in October, which isn't correct because it has to go to county first.
Right.
So it would show up on your second meeting in October.
At the very early.
At the very earliest, and that would be just coming in for preliminary subdivision at that point. I'll head around.
But you'd want to have a determination and classification secret. Determination is complete enough for a public hearing.
Which would come at your second meeting of September.
Right.
But again, you won't actually be acting on anything until
Right.
if the board approves it being complete.
That's true. That's.
Setting a public hearing, the normal procedure.
So there's a new procedure, Ross, agent. We have an updated procedure that requires us to review each application before we can even see it. That says this application is complete. Staff believes it's complete. The board believes it's complete, so we can put it on the agenda. And that way we can get it to the first day, which obviously is secret. And then we go on from there. So with that, let me finish up the staff. Tim?
Yeah, I mean, I can see some issue. There's going to be, have to be a whole lot of fill there. I see it getting into my guardrail area along Collet Road, which would require a lot of piping.
When I saw the guardrail, yeah, cut open for that roadway and the ditch is pretty deep there anyway, so.
Well, Larry, he had the information, so I don't know why you didn't show it today, but tomorrow, he'll be talking about those guardrails and what we're thinking about doing with those. Sometimes you can just open those up and then put a driveway straight in all of them.
Okay.
I mean, you guys are the experts and not me.
Yeah. Yeah.
So the end sections, they gotta go on those guardrails.
Yes.
A little bit.
Yeah, everything is. So unless we can make it all out of rubber.
Right. Okay.
No, I don't disagree with you. I don't want to have to spend the money. I don't want to have to.
And have any perfects into there on that area. We've got to be going on and that's going to be going to be an interesting section of Collet.
Yeah.
Well, and kind of, eh?
Sketch. In that one house, it would be like right down the road if they had the gas place.
Right.
I'm sure they're not going to like.
They're not going to like that at all.
I don't like going anywhere near it. Yes.
Yeah. Exactly. Anything else there?
Nothing at this.
Okay, um, board, Doug, have a chance to look at any, any comment?
Just what's been brought up.
Yeah, yeah.
Inside you can.
And tomorrow night's the meeting, what time?
Not tomorrow night. It's during the day. Tomorrow morning.
Oh, tomorrow morning?
You guys, agenda, I don't have that.
I don't. I got confused with the morning and the night. I want to say, I want to say it was ten thirty.
Yeah, it's definitely, yeah.
If at the end of the meeting, I think it's ten thirty in the morning, but you want to look at that really close and make sure you're here for it because we certainly won't hear it. And the preliminary until it goes to PRC.
Right, okay.
Regina?
No, we don't have.
Adrian?
No, I really, I mean.
Let me just reinforce some things before you go to PRC, okay?
Yeah, it's ten twenty-five.
Thank you. Ten twenty-five now, okay? Remember, this is going to be a type one action, so you'll have to do a full environmental assessment form.
Yep.
Um. Site distance on County Road eight is going to be an issue because of the topography on County Road eight and those driveways. Just keep an eye on that and be able to explain how you're going to mitigate that issue. We already talked about the backing of vehicles and you've got a solution there. No connection to town's present sewer line, which means septics and perking and wetlands and, or wet land as opposed to wetland. So just keep an eye on that with stormwater concerns.
Okay.
Um. The process is pretty simple. You go to PRC, then we go, you'll do the preliminary subdivision, final subdivision, then preliminary site plan, then final site plan. At least three of those will be public hearings probably. So be prepared for that. And just, you know, I say this to every applicant and about twenty-five percent listen to me, so I'll at least do my best to tell you. Work with staff. Sit down with staff, talk to them. They know what they need. They know what we are looking for. And it'll be a much easier, faster process if you work with staff and then it comes to us and they're happy with it, then chances are we'll be happy with it as well.
So I should bring Dana for coffee to the meeting?
At least meetings with them, you can't do that with us per se, but at least meetings with them, that's up to you, but they do work for food.
As they say in the neighborhood, "Anway, right out."
Yeah, so I'm just giving you a heads up. Work with them.
Absolutely.
And I'll be honest with you. I've seen projects go through here so slick because they work with them and I've seen projects go for months and months and months when they refuse to work with staff. It just is what it is. It's history.
We've had both tonight.
We have. We've had both of those tonight. No doubt about that. So, okay, so that's, I just, we wanted to give you some feedback. They're going to talk to you about all the things I talked to you about. They're going to talk about them tomorrow. So just listen to them and move forward with it, okay? All right, thank you.
The one thing I really want to stress here is the driveway access on County Road eight.
Driveway access?
Yeah. It's not even site distance. Because when you have a school bus stopped and cars come over that hill, that's a bad situation.
Yeah, really.
All the school bus stop signs ahead don't mean nothing.
Right.
By the way, I've just seen people blow right by school buses. They're.
Oh, and don't even say that. I cringe. I saw.
I thought just the other day. I was telling guy I was a trainee. But I'm more concerned about blowing into the back of them than that whole mind.
Yeah, so just look at that. You know, heaven forbid, we have seen times where they have used combined driveways. I'm not ever a big fan of that, but from a safety standpoint, that might be a better solution.
Okay.
Just think about those from a safety thing, okay?
Right, you're trying to go flagline.
Well, not necessarily. You could run, you could push those two on County Road eight back a little bit and run a little access tag where you loop them all into one. I don't know.
We've looked at all kinds of things.
Yeah, yeah, it's a pain.
I remember it's not about that tomorrow.
It's tough. It's tough because of the topography. So just keep in mind, talk about it, work with staff. They know what we're looking for, okay? Thank you very much. Have a good night.
I appreciate it.
Yeah, have a good night. Okay, next item up, open discussion reports. Ron?
Finished one draft for the ZBA that's gone pitch up and on for review. The second draft is going to them tomorrow. So they should have it well enough in advance of their meeting to study it and make some decisions.
Okay.
On the, so on the access area, clearance for Mr. Powell.
Right.
Sidewalk project, they continue with the foundation for the bridge crossing. They have a change order that just came in this afternoon for realigning the trail, getting it off the backs of some of those properties over there on halfway's corners. And they're beginning the process of refurbishing the edges of the sidewalk with topsoil and grass and blacktopping the driveways. Just a couple of areas that still need the concrete, but we're pretty much moving along in the right direction on that. Hopefully, that will work and the next thing is waiting on MRB. Alan, if you're awake over there, just let them know it's taking an awful long time to get an overlaid map.
Will do.
I thought you'd go to sleep, Colin.
No, it's not Lance on. It's Colin.
Yeah. Lance is baking some sick.
I know.
You know? That's it.
Okay, Dan?
We're still very, very busy with hail damage. We're doing a ton of inspections from all the different roofers and
you here for the concept plan?
Yes.
Already been done?
I saw your agenda. I figured I should bring a pillow.
You haven't obviously been to one of our meetings in a long time.
You are like parenting. Not like Brian, not like Pittsburgh.
Okay.
I'm Larry Heiner from Marcus.
Larry, thanks for coming. We'll see you next time.
Okay, any comments for me?
Nope. We're good.
Tomorrow morning.
Tomorrow morning. Be ready, be prepared.
I'll be there.
Okay.
Well, good. I'll be able to get some.
You're supposed to get the Danish and coffee. That's what it was.
Oh, the Danish and coffee? Well, that's Penfield.
Yeah, Mark said something about that.
He did.
Yep.
Well, maybe he'll let me know. Although I speak in favor. I'm a Penfield, old Penfield boy. Whenever I went to a PRC meeting in Penfield, I brought the donuts.
There you go. All right.
These are five o'clock.
All right, I think we go third at ten twenty-five tomorrow morning, right?
Yeah, I'm on a ten twenty-five. I will then be there.
I wouldn't be there at ten forty-five.
Thank you very much.
All right, have a good day.
All right. I'll sign in so you know I was actually in the room.
Dan?
Go ahead. So very busy with the hail damage.
For sure.
August, we did six hundred and twenty permits or somewhere around there. So that's way, way above our normal month.
Yeah.
Yeah, so and we even did the chairman. We inspected.
And not inspected, take care of it.
On top of that, we're doing the normal sub for all the applications for planning and zoning and that's still moving forward. Again, we went due to the lack of staff right now, we went with all your paperwork being digital. Again, if you ever need something, I mean, Ed sent me an email this morning. He wants some subprinted.
I didn't want those to be printed on my printer since I'm paying by the page now.
So again, it's not a problem to print anything. Just you need to let me know. Otherwise, we're going to stay digital, at least for a while to, just from a staff.
Nation.
If you guys don't want your concept plans, you can leave them. We will give them to staff tomorrow, so I won't print more. Because I did send that to digital and I anticipate that plan to change probably dramatically.
Well, it's going to change.
Yeah.
So that's all I have for the night.
Okay, Tim?
Finally got all of our paving done. That's a big load up from us. Just trying to get everything buttoned up and ready for winter.
Oh, don't even say that. I know it. Don't even say it.
Paving the plow is now. That's what he does.
Don't even talk about it. Alan, you're up next. Please, get us out of the snow dogs.
I've got nothing to report tonight.
Okay, all right, we'll move to the board, Doug, Adrian, Regina. Okay, I wanted to ask a question. What's going on with Maddie's? We saw something months ago. And haven't seen anything.
The last PRC, he said that he was going to submit his updated, it was all done and his engineer was going to submit the drawing. I know Ron's been in contact with him because they put conduit in when they did the sidewalk so that they could put the light posts on the other side of the driveway.
Mm-hmm.
Um, we're hoping that he's going to give us an update tomorrow. I was expecting him to be on a planning board agenda here very soon. That's where we're at.
How about Alex landing? They're still working with D E C?
D E C, Argeni, Niagara Mohawk, anybody that.
You know. But they're all talking past each other, right? Okay.
Well, each one has its own challenges right now.
That's in very political way. You're going to be a politician one day like that. Anything with, I shouldn't even mention the Farmington Market Center? Who's that? Did we get anything on from them? Yeah, what is that?
I got an email, Ron, you were copied in from.
Yeah, we don't believe it.
Engineer who says the applicant is still renegotiating some of the contracts with the businesses there.
Farmington Market Center will be next year at that speed.
You want my political correct answer, so that's what I'm giving you.
If that's.
I predict it will be a Wade tourist store before.
Anybody else have anything else? Motion to adjourn by Regina, second by Doug, all in favor. All right, all right, let's get out of here.